September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. Roll call. All aldermen are present. Item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Item five, election of a common council president due to the resignation of President Venemen from this position.
Number four, reading the minutes.
Skip four.
Sorry. Item number four, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Attachment number one, what are your wishes? I have a motion by Venemen.
To.
Approve.
To approve the minutes. I have a second by Katna. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes, eight A's to zero Nays. Now, item five, election of the common council president due to the resignation of President Venemen from this position. Take a minute just to thank Alderman Venemen for his guidance this last year. That being said, at this time, I'm opening the floor to nominations. Anyone nominating another alderman to be president? Oh, Patrick?
I'll nominate Alderman Katna.
All right, we have a nomination for Katna from Delaney. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Palmquist.
All right. We have a nomination for Palmquist from Penscover. Any other nominations? All right. All right, at this time, I need unanimous consent to close the nominations. Wait, I'm sorry, before we close, Ms. Katna, do you accept the nomination? Yes, thank you. Ms. Palmquist, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Now, I need unanimous consent to close the nominations. Thumbs up, head nod, eye or something. Good, all right. All right. At this time, everybody has a piece of paper, right, that they can cast their ballot on? So you can go ahead and cast your, hold on.
So do you want to decide how you want to break a tie or what the rules are for this? If you get five votes for one person, are they nominated? What are your wishes regarding how you want to proceed?
Highest number of votes? Majority votes, yep.
Yeah, I'd say majority if there's a tie. Are you okay with a coin flip?
Yeah.
Okay, see if everybody's okay with that.
Is everyone okay with a coin flip breaking a tie?
Okay.
Is that a yes or no, or speak now or forever hold your peace?
Any objection?
Worked for me.
Yeah?
It did.
Right. Mr. Pollak, did you have something?
Well, the only question I'm gonna say is on the ballots, you ultimately have to put their ward number?
No, this is a secret ballot.
I know, but.
No, you don't have to put your ward number because we don't record that.
Okay, that sounds good.
You just fill in the last name of the person that you want and don't tell me who you are.
All right, so we're in agreement that we're taking a vote, five wins, four to four. We will flip a coin. I'll have to find one to see who wins. Go, all right. Go ahead and cast your ballot and pass it over.
One vote for Palmquist. Vote for Palmquist. Vote for Katna. Vote for Palmquist. Vote for Palmquist. Vote for Katna. Vote for Katna. Vote for Palmquist. Palmquist five, Katna three. So Palmquist is elected president. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Item six, consider for confirmation the appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. See attachment two, please. The following appointments are submitted for your approval. Board of Review, Alex Hewitt, residing at one seven zero Third Street South, is appointed as a regular member to replace Don Wallach to a term expiring on five one two thousand and twenty-six. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Venemen to approve. I have a second by Penscover. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes, eight A's to zero Nays. Item seven, consider a resolution that City Wisconsin Rapids be exempt from the payment of any county library tax as provided in section four three point six four two B Wisconsin statutes. See item three. What are your wishes? Ms. Katna.
Is this for twenty twenty-five? Or a payment for twenty twenty-four?
Yes. Yes, sorry, it is for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so I guess my understanding is then tonight, we kind of decide whether we want to, as in the past, it's been talked, county library or city library. If we opted tonight to not pay or be exempt from the county library tax, that would mean that we plan to continue city library. Is my understanding correct?
Basically, what this is doing is that if you approve this tonight, is that city taxpayers would be exempt from paying the cowbor, the county library tax because the county levies of support for the public libraries in the county. And by passing this, and basically, they would be exempt from that. The caveat is, is obviously, there's a minimum appropriation that's needed from the city, and that amount is five hundred and one thousand eight forty-three. In the twenty twenty-four budget, the city's appropriation for the library is a million and eighty-seven thousand and some change. So basically, by passing this, city taxpayers would not have to pay towards that county library tax.
Questions, comments?
Motion to approve the resolution that the City of Wisconsin Rapids be exempted from the payment of any county library tax.
I got a motion by Austin. Seconded by Palmquist. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes, eight A's to zero Nays. Consider for adoption the actions of the planning commission. Item eight, consider for adoption the actions of planning commission at its meeting held on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission met at four P M. on September ninth in the council chambers. A quorum of members was present, along with a list of others in attendance available at the Clerk's Office or Community Development. The meeting was called to order at four oh one P M. Item one was the approval of the report from August fifth. Motion by Maruets to approve the report, seconded by Tao. That motion carried four zero. Item two was a request from David Zilke for a special exception for a chain link trash enclosure in a commercial zoning district at twenty-two forty-eighth Street South. Staff provided a summary of the report and recommended approval with conditions. Conversation took place amongst the commissioners to which staff responded. Some of the conversation related to other projects that have been approved previously and a few of the conditions. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve the request omitting conditions one and two in the staff report relating to landscaping requirements. A second by Tao. That motion carried four zero. Item three was a request by B N B D Properties LLC for site plan review to perform site improvements at eighteen sixty, eighteen forty-eight, eighteen fifty-two, and nineteen hundred Eighth Street. Staff provided a summary of the request, recommending approval with conditions as outlined. Representatives from B N B D Properties spoke in favor of the request. The commission discussed certain aspects of the project to which staff also notified that a zoning board of appeals variance request was necessary by the applicant, and the staff was recommending that that be added as a condition. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve the request for site plan review subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, including that a variance be granted by the Board of Appeals. Seconded by Maruets, that motion carried four zero. Item four was a request from the Community Development Department to discuss only secondary review requirements within the zoning code for uses. Staff provided a review of the requests. Commissioners expressed their support for the idea of future zoning code amendments related to secondary review processes for uses. No action was taken. Item five was adjournment. There was a motion by Tao to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Gudrow. That motion carried four zero, and the meeting was adjourned at four fifty P M. I submit this for your review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
I get a motion by Venemen to approve, seconded by Penscover.
I'd like to hold out four.
All right, holding out item four, Mr. Katna. What are your wishes with the remainder of the minutes?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, any objection to holding it out? Seeing none. What are your wishes with the remainder of the minutes? All right, sorry, we already got a motion and a second with the remainder. Go ahead and cast your ballot. Go ahead and cast your ballot. All right, motion passes, eight A's, zero Nays, to pass the remainder of the minutes, holding out item four. Mr. Katna?
Yeah, just wanted to revisit this and keep it out for discussion here at council. So those who were there, they wanna, I was not, but if they want to give what happened and what the thoughts were, and why the action was or wasn't taken.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to kind of give a rundown so that we know what's going on with this one, so everybody's on the same page. Thank you, Mr. Kearns.
So there's been some requests from some of you and the mayor in regards to simplifying our ordinance. So I had brought forth requests back in twenty twenty to do so. There's a lot of secondary review standards at the planning commission level where a permitted use such as a restaurant still has to go to planning commission for that secondary review for architectural standards, site plan review, lighting review, access, so ingress egress, landscaping, and then planning commission obviously is that secondary review body. However, oftentimes, that secondary review can be detrimental to businesses, especially those at this time of the year in the fall when they're butting up against the winter months and are looking to try to fast track some of these projects. And frankly, I think there are somewhere, if it's a permitted use in a, you know, a restaurant in a commercial district, we're expecting that restaurants will obviously be located in that district. That's why we zone that property as B two. That if it's permitted, that the staff review is enough, and the secondary review is not necessarily required at the planning commission level. So I had provided, so we introduced this item for discussion only. We did not meet the cutoff to take action here, but I think as discussion, it's appropriate. So I, again, pulled out a twenty twenty memo that I had wrote to simplify a lot of the secondary review requirements for about thirty, about forty, forty different uses, meaning that there would no longer be secondary review for those uses. The review would happen internally. In addition to that, I added to the memo that we'd be looking at also clarifying some of the parking lot reconstruction requirements and parking lot paving requirements moving forward. And again, just to simplify the process for contractors and developers looking to develop in the community and kind of reduce some of that red tape having those secondary review standards. So the method I've provided is, again, just to remove these these forty to fifty or so uses from that secondary review and then I'll come back with an ordinance amendment next month, which would be October, to have planning commission and council take action on that.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Oh, sorry.
So no action was taken at planning commission? Would it be appropriate, or do we have the authority to take action tonight to move this along? It was on the agenda, and it does come to council. Did pull it out, so.
You you cannot take action tonight because an ordinance amendment of the zoning code requires a public hearing notice in the paper, two insertions, as well as a public hearing. And we didn't meet the deadline for September, so it'll come back in October to meet that statutory notice requirement.
Based on that, this is up to the planning commission to first approve and then come to council for another approval. It wouldn't be something that we could take up at legislative?
Nope. So planning commission oversees the zoning ordinance under Wisconsin state statute, so they are the recommending body for changes to that ordinance, and then council takes action on their recommendation.
Okay. I think we can dispose of this then.
Yeah, any other questions or comments? All right, just thank you, Mr. Kearns. I just want everybody to be up to speed on what we were talking about here. But yes, at this time, we will move forward. Thank you. Consider for, item nine, consider for adoption the actions of standing committees of the common council as follows. Item A, Finance and Property Committee meeting held on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Finance and Property Committee meeting held on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Actually, we'll do one at a time. Yep. Go ahead, Ms. Katna.
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at five P M. on Tuesday, September tenth, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Item one was called to order. Chairperson Katna called a meeting order at five P M. Item two, consider for approval the acceptance of the Legacy Foundation Central Wisconsin Grant in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand for the municipal zoo and approval to proceed with bids for improvements to the municipal zoo, including a river otter exhibit, ADA compliant playground equipment, and insulating Helen's house to make it suitable for year-round activities. It was moved by Venemen, seconded by Pollack, to approve the acceptance of the Legacy Foundation Central Wisconsin Grant in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand for the municipal zoo and to approve proceeding with bids for improvements to the municipal zoo, including a river otter exhibit, ADA compliant playground equipment, and insulating Helen's house to make it suitable for year-round activities. Motion carried three zero. Item three, consider for approval upgrading Wisconsin Rapids Community Media Public Access Channel Equipment, including upgrades necessary to make Wisconsin Rapids Community Media accessible and ADA compliant. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Venemen, to approve a proposal by Spectrum Enterprise to upgrade Wisconsin Rapids Community Media Public Access Channel Equipment, including upgrades necessary to make community media accessible and ADA compliant in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars using funds from the W R C M Reserve Account. Motion carried three zero. Item four, consider for approval upgrading studio equipment for the Wisconsin Rapids Community Media. It was moved by Venemen, seconded by Pollack, to approve a proposal from Uniset LLC to upgrade studio equipment for Wisconsin Rapids Community Media in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents, with seven hundred and thirty to be reimbursed to the city by the City of Marshfield for their shared portion for a total cost to the city of sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars and fifty cents using funds from the W R C M Reserve Account. Motion carried three zero. Item five, consider for approval a resolution of support for the city's application for funding from the Railroad Crossing Elimination Planning Grant. It's moved by Venemen, seconded by Pollack, to approve a resolution of support for the city's application for funding from the Railroad Crossing Elimination Planning Grant. Motion carried two one, with Katna voting in the negative. Item six, consider for approval budget amendment number two. It was moved by Pollack, seconded by Venemen, to approve budget amendment number two. Motion carried three zero. Item seven, audit of the bills. It was moved by Pollack, seconded by Venemen, to approve check numbers two two seven six five to two three one eight zero for a total of seven million, fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Motion carried three zero. Item eight, set into the next meeting date. The next regular meeting in the Finance and Property Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, October first, two thousand and twenty-four, at five P M. Item nine, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen dot eight five, paragraph one, paragraph E of the Wisconsin statute which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties or investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Moved by Venemen, seconded by Pollack to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee considered proposals for replacing outdated printers and implementing managed print services for the city. Item ten, the committee returned to open session. It's moved by Katna, seconded by Venemen, to return to open session. Motion carried three zero, and the committee returned to open session. Item eleven, consider for approval of vendor for replacement of outdated printers and managed print services for the city. It's moved by Katna, seconded by Venemen, to approve a proposal from E O Johnson in the amount of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents for the replacement of outdated printers and managed print services for the city. Motion carried three zero. Item twelve was adjournment. Meeting adjourned at five fifty P M. And with that, I make a motion to approve these minutes.
Jake, you want to hold out the closed session item because we're holding it in closed session at the end?
If others find it necessary, I think that on the next one, that one certainly. I mean, you're talking about the printers?
Yeah, it's a closed session item at the end, so.
If you want, you can approve without approving that one because you can consider that in closer, it's an item on the agenda at the end, on the council agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I'll submit with approval as is. If anybody wants to hold that out, to talk about it at the end, they can, but my motion will stand.
I just said, yeah, I don't have anything to hold up, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank the City of Wisconsin Rapids. Thanks Legacy Foundation for the grant for the zoo and thank Mr. Klingforth, working hard on that grant and getting it. So that was a big coup for the city, so I just wanted to let, you know, say in public how lucky we are to have Legacy Foundation in this town. And I'm really thanking for it because I think it's pretty darn cool, so that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. You want to hit your button, motion by Katna? And we are not holding anything out as of yet. Is there any? I need a second. Okay, I got a second from Venemen. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes, seven A's to one abstention. Or no Nays and one abstention. All right, item B, Finance and Property Committee held on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Katna?
Finance and Property Committee met at five oh three P M. on Tuesday, September seventeenth, in council chambers at City Hall. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present except Alderperson Delaney. Item one, called to order. Chairperson Katna called a meeting to order at five oh three P M. Item two, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen dot eight five, paragraph one, paragraph E of the Wisconsin statute which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Venemen, seconded by Katna, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried two zero, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee considered the following proposals. Implementation of C Click Fix at a cost of six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents for the first year and the reoccurring annual payment structure as outlined in the proposal provided. B, for the initial one-time cost of CP pay for three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and the one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollar annual reoccurring fee. C, for the implementation of A M M Select Pro and Live Meeting Management System from Civic Plus at a cost of eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the initial year and the reoccurring annual amount of eighty-seven hundred for ongoing maintenance and support. Item three, the committee returned to open session. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Venemen. The motion carried two zero. Item four, consider for approval the following proposals. Implementation of C Click Fix at a cost of six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents for the first year. Reoccurring annual payment structure as outlined in the proposal provided. No action was taken. B, for the initial one-time cost of CP pay of three thousand and the one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five annual reoccurring fee. It's moved by Venemen, seconded by Katna, to approve the initial one-time cost of CP pay for the noted amounts. C, for the implementation of A M M Select. C, for the implementation of AMM Select Pro and Live Meeting Management System from Civic Plus at a cost of $8,750 for the initial year, and the reoccurring annual amount of $8,700 for ongoing maintenance and support. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the implementation of AMM Select Pro and Live Meeting Manager for the noted amounts. Motion carried two zero. Item five, adjournment, is moved by Veneman, seconded by Catnaugh, to adjourn. Motion carried two zero, and the meeting adjourned at 5:40 PM. And with that, I motion these minutes for approval.
All right. I got a motion by Catnaugh to approve the minutes. Mr. Veneman?
So I understand we can hold out item four A to discuss, and generate, do we need to discuss that in closed session then? Yeah, so I would, yeah, I would like to hold out item four A to be discussed in closed session.
All right. Four A being held out to be discussed in closed session by Mr. Veneman. Any other? I need a second. I have a second by Mr. Austin. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes eight As to zero As. Items, item C, Public Works Committee meeting held on September 5th, 2024. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, September 5th, in council chambers. All members were present. Item one, we called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, we reviewed the engineering and street department monthly activity report. Item three, review and consider modifying the parking along Dale Street between Sixth Street South and East Cul-de-sac, and Sixth Street South between Dale Street and Dewey Street. The current parking situation near the intersection of Sixth Street South and Dale Street was discussed. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin, to prohibit parking from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM along the north and south sides of Dale Street, from Sixth Street South to 171 feet east, as well as the east side of Sixth Street South, from Dale Street to 81 feet north. That motion carried. Item four, review the intersection study at Rosewood Ave and 15th Place South. The intersection study was reviewed due to safety concerns at the intersection. The engineering department's findings were presented. No recommended additional signing was advised, and no action was taken. Item five, review the referral list. The referral list was reviewed, removing item 10, with request from Alderperson Pollock to reinstate item nine, to review installation of stop signs at intersection of Apricot Street and 14th Street North. Item six, set the next meeting date. It was set for October 3rd at 5:00 PM, and we adjourned at 5:33 PM. And that concludes the report from the Public Works Committee.
All right. I just want to make note that on item three, that this is an ordinance, there's an ordinance in the packet for this item, so approval is approval of the ordinance, so you're aware. We're changing the ordinance. All right. That being said, what are your wishes? Mr. Catnaugh?
That's approval of an ordinance specific to the parking along only Dale and Sixth Street South and the East Cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
Yes. Specific to item three, yep.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the Public Works Committee meeting minutes.
I got a motion by Catnaugh to approve the minutes. I got a second by Pence. Go over. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes eight As, zero As. Item D, Human Resources Committee meeting held on September 5th, 2024. Mr. Delaney?
Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee held a meeting on Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in the common council chambers at City Hall. Alderpersons Delaney, Pollock, and Pluus were present. Also present were Mayor Zacher, Human Resources Manager Ryan Hartman, and Fire Chief Todd Ekis. Item one was called to order. Chairperson Delaney called the meeting to order at 4:00 PM. Discuss and consider for approval, a request from Fire Chief, oh, item two, sorry. Discuss and consider for approval, a request from Fire Chief Ekis, to allow a battalion chief to be appointed to the vacant deputy chief position. As no division chiefs currently qualify for the deputy chief position, this will allow appointment of a battalion chief as deputy chief for this vacancy only, with a recommended stipend additional compensation of $5,300 per year for a battalion chief so appointed. And there was an attachment. Motion by Delaney to approve a request from Fire Chief Ekis to approve the change in job description, that in the event that a division chief is not qualified and a battalion chief meets the identified qualifications, a battalion chief can be named deputy chief. Motion died on the floor for lack of second. No other motions regarding the item were made. Item three was adjournment. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluus, to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 4:52 PM.
What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the Human Resource Committee minutes.
We're just making a clarification here with item two. There will be, there will need to be a motion in order to advance this item. It came out of the committee without a recommendation, so.
And Alderperson Catnaugh's motion was to approve as is, just to clarify, okay? So no action on two.
So I have a motion by Catnaugh, seconded by Pollock. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes seven As to one Nay. Item E, Committee of the Whole meeting held on August 27th, 2024. Mr. Veneman?
A meeting of the committee, meeting of the Committee of the Whole was held in council chambers on Tuesday, August 27th. All Alderpersons were present. Alderperson Austin attended via video, audio conferencing, and also present were Mayor Zacher, City Attorney Schill, Human Resources Manager Hartman, Finance Director DeSorci, and City Clerk Jennifer Gosick. Council President called the meeting to order. Veneman called the meeting to order at 6:02. All Alderpersons were present. Alderperson Austin attended via audio conferencing. Item three, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, Para 1, Para E, excuse me, of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Pence, over, seconded by Catnaugh, to go into closed session. Roll call was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. A motion carried eight As and zero As, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee will discuss preliminary strategies for negotiations regarding successor labor agreements with WRPPA and IAFF. In closed session, the committee discussed preliminary strategies for negotiations regarding successor labor agreements with WRPPA and IAFF. No action was taken on this item. In closed session, the committee will discuss strategies regarding the terms of renewals or extensions of emergency service contracts with surrounding municipalities. In closed session, the committee discussed strategies regarding the terms of renewals or extensions of emergency service agreement with surrounding municipalities. No action was taken on this item. The committee will adjourn in closed session. It was moved by Pence, over, seconded by Veneman, to adjourn. Motion carried eight As and zero As, and the meeting adjourned at 8:09 PM. With that, I move to approve the minutes from the Committee of the Whole.
All right. I got a motion by Veneman to approve the minutes. I got a second by Austin. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Motion passes eight As to zero As. Thank you. Item 10, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports are placed on file. I encourage everyone to read them at your earliest convenience, and reach out to anybody in the departments that, if you have questions, to talk with them about, and learn as much as you can. Thank you. Item 11, referrals to committees. This is Gosick.
I have one referral from Alderperson Palmquist regarding the ordinance regarding chickens.
Chicken ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Item 12, in open session, the council may go into closed session under section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining resources require a closed session. In closed session, the council will consider proposal for replacing outdated printers and int-
Actually, we don't need that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I didn't catch that either. So item 12 has been basically deleted or removed, because we've already concluded business in previous minutes.
So number 15.
So moving on to item 15, in open session, the council may go into closed session under section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In section 19.851G, Wisconsin statutes, which reads, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. In closed session, the council will discuss a mediated waste water services settlement agreement with the village of Beeren. What are your wishes?
Excuse me. I think we should do the finance item first, because we will end up adjourning in closed session on the, on this matter. Didn't you hold out?
No, that was not-
Finance?
No, that one was not held out.
September 17th?
Hold on. We did, sorry.
Yeah, for a-
Oh, you're right. You're right, you're right. Item number four. Thank you, Sue.
So I would, I would probably do that one, so that then, because you'll need to go back into open for that, and then you could adjourn in close, just a suggestion.
All right. So would that, I could read item 12 again, with putting this in there and taking the other one out?
Right. Or we'll read it right from the finance agenda from September 17th. Yeah, it's, it's just the one exemption for competitive negotiating. It's not the attorney one.
I see what you're saying. Okay. So before we go to item 15, I'm going back to the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on September 17th, 2024. Item two A, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will consider the following proposals. Item A for implementation of C Click Fix at a cost of $6,151.37 for the first year, and the reoccurring annual payment structure as outlined in the proposal provided. What are your wishes?
Motion to move to closed session.
I got a motion by Austin, seconded by Veneman, to move into closed session. Motion passes eight As to zero As. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Hold on, I'm just going to consider it and take the vote out.
All right. Consider for approval. We're back in open session. Okay. So I'm going to call it item 14, even though I guess it's not. Consider for approval.
Hold on. Make sure we got Joe back in there, and this door's still shut. Tyler, can you? I'm sorry? I'm what now? Yeah, I think so. I just have to wait. It's nothing, we'll do that. It's fine, whatever. Yeah, we can see whatever's on. Okay. Is Joe back?
Good to go. All right. In, back in open session. Consider for approval, the implementation of C Click Fix at a cost of $6,151.37 for the first year, and reoccurring annual payment structure as outlined in the proposal provided. All right. Is, that motion is dead. All right. Moving on to item 15. In open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under-
Go ahead.
Under section 19.851E of Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In section 19.851G, Wisconsin statutes, which reads, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. In closed session, the council will discuss a mediated waste water services agreement, settlement agreement with the village of Beeren. What are your wishes? I got a motion by Pluus to go into closed session, seconded by Austin. All those in favor, or go ahead and cast your ballots. Eight As to zero As. Motion passes. We are now in closed session.